They don't do what Lund does.
No.
They turned out of that road.
At this time, we were called to order the Edsfield County Planning Commission wet session, June 12th, 2025. Called to order, we should have two guests be here tonight, representing from Blackstone, on customer home here. Blackstone, Willie Duvan. You hear this? I'm just saying if you hear. Okay, let's see. Old business, we got a... Our old business is a review of sample ordinance by the flowing reservation ordinance to review of first treated discussion regarding the mass graces and curbs. So, you want to...
If you want to, since we've got a lot to go with the other two, y'all can amend the agenda and ask to do new business first.
Okay, make an amendment. We have new business first and continue with old business.
Second on that.
Second.
Emotion second that we make amendment to move into our new business at this time. All in favor, raise your right hand. Pose eyes happy. Our new business. Primary part review for the following land development application. Proposed used car dealership to be located off Holmes Pond Road in Johnston. Partica I-182 double R double R zero five three triple R. Proposed short term, oh, we'll go that next. Okay, we have Willie Duvan. You want to come up front here, say your name and address and state your... What you're requesting. Find yourself.
Willie Duvan, trying to open up a used car lot on my land in Johnston South Carolina, 49 Holmes Pond Road. Trying to use car dealership.
Okay, according to this, you want to develop here 75 aesthetic gravel area to be located in front of your residence and use that to use car lot, right?
Yes, sir.
Hour of operation be from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And one employee will work during hours of operation, be no more than five to 10 vehicles on the lot or sale at any time. That's what I'm trying to hear. According to this zoning district, not zoning district, the mental lot requirement in zoning, that not after this application process for land development even completed, all that. So, any question coming from the commissioners? Any question on what's going on?
No, it was pretty... Yeah, I just want to make sure. You're actually going to be parking the cars and have the business office? How far off the Holmes Pond Road?
Off the road, but the office is going to be off the road.
Yeah, where their cars are parked?
Where the cars, like 70, about 75 feet.
75 feet, okay. Have you talked to any of your neighbors?
Yeah, I talked to, yeah, I have. They have no problem.
They don't have a problem with it?
No, man.
Okay.
I know I'm pretty good.
Okay, let's see, I'm trying to find it. I'm going to write down through there. Now, you live on that same part of the lot? Is your home on that...
Yes, sir.
...planting land also?
You'll have approximately how many cars at a time?
Five to 10.
Five to 10.
So, according to state regulation, you have to have a little building at the U for transact your business from, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. How about signage? You planning to put in signage out there?
Yes, sir.
So, let's see sewer and water, I'll get some of that. You have any, they come in top, you know, everything in order? Okay. You know, that's aching, that's aching electric out there?
Uh, domino, domini.
Oh, domini, that's right, I'm sorry, they do come around.
Domini on all four.
See, you got water and all, not necessarily, but you did exist in sewer, okay. Any more questions? Okay.
Yeah, I do. On the aerial, it shows a lot of trees down your driveway and trees that it looks like at the end of the driveway. Are those still there?
Yes, but they will be moved.
Which?
Trees like in the front and like maybe like a couple.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm going to make the driveway off of my driveway, so I got to remove like a few trees.
Move those trees, okay. I was just thinking about the aesthetic for your neighbors. Are they going to see a huge change?
No.
You know, from the road or from the sides?
There's a few I'm going to be moved, maybe them more than about five, six.
Okay. So, you'll have some vegetative buffer between the road and the business and then on each side of your property, so your neighbors won't be affected as far as the aesthetics, the way it looks?
It might be, they might be having a lot of trees on there.
Are you on this side of the pond? Before you get to the pond? Before, on the left, before you get to the pond? Okay. Okay, I don't have anything about having anything else. Okay, we need to make, we have vote on in the meeting, this is just our wet session. Yeah, we getting there for general information. Appreciate it. Now, it's 6:00 meeting, we are... Okay, next we have a proposed short term RV park located on the corner of Edsfield Road and Brim Oak Road in Trenton, that's Highway 25 south.
Representative Tom Dunaway and Alisa Smith, you'll want to come up with this, okay?
They both did.
Yeah.
Tip myself, tip myself.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Tom Dunaway with Cranston.
Alisa Smith.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We're representing Blackstone.
Okay, can you brief us on what you got going here?
Sure, sure. 17 acre track at the intersection of right off of 25 and Brim Oak Road. Our client is proposing professional RV facilities for short-term rental, you know, or place for the RVs to park. They'll be provided with water and septic connections. We'll have the site provided with 150-foot buffer off of 25 left natural and then buffers in accordance to code around the other, the other property lines. We will have a stormwater management and recreational pond that will manage the stormwater prior to it being released off-site and we will have a septic system that is designed to serve the entire property. Access will be provided off of Brim Oak Road, given some of the topographic constraints ordering Highway 25.
Okay. Have you done any research with DEHEC done yet, you know, in a permanent, popular what type system?
I know the soil scientists has been on site and has completed their work, they're working directly with the owner's representative to design that septic system.
So, by the way, it'd be one set of systems for the whole, whole park?
It will be a community system, yes. It will, it will drain to holding tanks and then pump to the drain field that will be sized appropriately for the flow.
You said access was off Brim Oak?
Yes, ma'am.
At what part?
It's...
Is it in that hairpin turn?
No, it's before that, yeah. It's before that and so the site distances will be verified through the entire design process.
Have you considered access off Highway 25?
It was considered. The topography drops off significantly off of Highway 25 and so the, you know, it was determined that it would be a safer, also a safer in addition to what it would take to build up your entrance there, it was also safer to bring the entrance over off of Brim Oak Road.
So, on this plat, are these contour lines?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Existing and proposed, yes.
Those are existing contour lines, so this shows the topography of the property?
Yes, ma'am. The dash lines are existing contours, the solid lines are proposed.
Oh, okay. My eyes had to catch the dotted lines.
Yeah, and so the intent with the grading plan is for the site to sit down and sort of, I mean, we envision that you won't even be able to see the site from the highway, given the natural buffer and the site being depressed, just to manage the grading activities that you shouldn't be able to even see the site from the highway.
What about from Brim Oak?
Right.
You will be able to see the site from Brim Oak Road, yes.
Have you considered a vegetative barrier there, just for aesthetics for the people that live down Brim Oak?
Sure, I think that's something that can certainly be considered within the buffer.
And is this the low point where your...
Yes, ma'am.
...your pond would be, right there?
Would that be commercial, would it have to have a commercial buffer on Brim Oak?
Commercial buffer off of Brim Oak? It'll be the type two.
We do show a buffer off of Brim Oak, yes.
Yeah. April, I do have a question. I know we have a countywide ordinance where if septic is required, where water supply is available, there's a minimum of one acre for residential, right? That's countywide ordinance?
If it's to be subdivided, this will not, this parcel will not be subdivided. It's going to remain one parcel. They're just going to have RV pads.
Right, but I'm talking about the septic system.
Because it applies to the septic.
Why wouldn't it apply?
It applies to subdivision. If you don't have access to both water and sewer, it's two and a half.
Right.
If you only have county water, it's one acre.
Right, per septic system.
It's just one acre. It's just, it specifies one acre, it doesn't specify septic.
But if an individual wants to build a house on one acre and they only have county supply, but they have to put in septic, we say that the minimum they can use is, well, into one acre.
To subdivide, subdivide means to cut into pieces.
I know that, April, but the, the size of the piece, the minimum size is one acre if you have to have a septic system.
That is strictly for subdivision only. The rule of thumb is in order to subdivide it, more than, and smaller than one acre, pieces, you can, you have to have county water.
I'm talking septic systems.
If you don't have septic, it's still the one acre rule.
I mean, if you, okay, I don't know if we're on the same page here. Water supply is county providing the water, okay? And so we have ordinance that says...
You can't cut up land.
You can't cut up land smaller than one acre if you have to put in a septic system. Because it's like...
You can't have access to either county water or sewer, either or.
That, well, if you have to have well and septic, it's two and a half acres.
Correct.
But...
But it's not specifying the sewer part. It's only being specific to the size of the lot you can have if you don't have accessibility to county sewer.
Right, so do they have, do they, do you have access to county sewer system, a sewage system instead of a septic tank system? Can you do that?
I understand it, it's in proximity of 25, yes, but it's, the topography is generally working against the site significantly in that regard.
Because you'd have to put in a pump station to get it up to the sewer lines?
Correct, and you would also have to cross 25.
And cross 25.
And so, one thing I would suggest keeping in mind also is that, you know, these RVs are, your effluent is going to be significantly less than a typical residential house at 100 gallons a day per person or 125 gallons per day per person. You know, these are generally, we understand, single person, you know, living in or temporarily staying on this site while they're working, their contract work, their nursing or whatever profession they be, may be in, so.
Well, I would, I would think construction worker is going to be there as long as the project maybe, so could, the person could be living there two or three years. Right, I mean, if they're, like the plant, like the RV park for Plant Vogel.
Sure.
It's, I mean, I've driven by it, it's all dirt and grass and gravel, but those are, those are, they're pretty much permanently living there during their contract time, right? So, that would be the same here, probably.
But it doesn't change their daily usage of water or sewer.
Well, yeah, so I guess I'm thinking, you know, like with a, with an RV recreational park, you got people in and out, you know, in and out, but there'll be weeks where there's nobody there using it. So, but I would think here, if you're targeting or you think your primary customer is going to be a construction worker, then they're going to be there more permanently than someone going in and out within seven days.
Our client has advised that their target market is a professional group, not saying contractors aren't, but, you know, insurance adjusters, folks that are in the area for a very short duration. And so that, I would ask that be considered as well.
I'm just, yeah, I guess my point is they're, they're still using that septic system, all the septic, so you're going to have a separate septic dump area for each site, right?
There will be a piped system.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this piped system will flow by gravity to tanks that will then pump to the identified drain field area, which is at the western end or sort of the northwest of the... It's going to be an engineered septic system. It will be, yes.
It's engineered, yeah, it's engineered, but you're not doing any type of water treatment there. I mean, other than the drain, the natural treatment of drain fields.
Yeah, it will be a drain field, the whole process will have to be approved through DES, yes.
But, oh, I guess what I'm saying, each site will be able to connect their, their black tank and gray tank water hoses at the site and then it's going to collect and go to the one septic tank?
There'll be multiple tanks.
Multiple septic tanks?
There'll be multiple tanks, yes.
One for each site or no, what's it going to be like?
No, 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 collectively, it will be sized, we're thinking three or four 1,500 gallon tanks.
Four.
And that number's still being calculated by the team that's designing the septic system.
Okay, but you'll have multiple sites going to the same tank?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, the, like, your multiple septic tanks, you're going to have like four or five sites going into that one tank.
It's going to be a one, one septic system for the entire...
Right.
You got county water or well? County.
Oh, and in the pictures, you've got concrete pads, are you going to pour concrete pads?
That's my understanding, concrete pads and then gravel drive. With that many lots, does there have to be a fire hydrant within a certain...
They're not permanent structures.
With the water, your water would be meeting off of one meter, it won't be individual meters, right? Just hook up, right? Or we do?
I would think it would be a master meter.
How you going to do that on the water system? Will it be individual meters or you going to have a main distribution and go from there?
I would, yeah, I think you'd do a master meter, one single, one single meter there.
I think there, I think I read there was a question, and I'm not finding the word, but I remember seeing the word temporary. Is, is this like a temporary RV park just during a construction period or this is going to be permanently there? That was, that was a question I had was, is this just for five years and then you're going to redevelop into something else or are you talking about a permanent RV park there? Permanent? Okay, so, all right, so someone misinterpreted temporary then, because that was their question was how long is it going to be there if it's temporary?
I presume that the temporary was...
I think maybe transient would be a better word, baby.
You argue about that all day.
Yeah, semantics.
You have any questions? I don't, you know, I don't, my basic, I love, I love to see how long, how far into process, I know it take money to get in this, are you on your designing your septic system and so forth, that sort? I know if you invest money to do it, you got to do that, but you trying to get in there where you can get the approval to, and go on with the, but I, you know, I just love to see more details on that, but I know from the design and engineers that, you know, so I'm trying to figure out. Now, we talking about temporarily. How, okay, on your, your contracting, if I'm bringing an RV in, I'm going to sign a contract for a certain period of time, how that going to work?
It's not designed for permanent residence, it's a maximum stay of 12 months.
Oh, I know what I'm saying, you're going to have some control over that, but I'd like to see, you know, you, somebody come in and set up, people do set up and you can't get rid of them when they, like in the rental business, we get them and you can't get them out.
No, this is a month, a month, you...
Month, by the lease.
Can you come to the mic, please? Okay, it'd be best so people can hear. What's your name?
So, you're partnership or the ownership, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's, it's designed for temporary residency for professionals in the area. That's why the temporary word was in there. It's not designed for somebody to live there. That's not allowed.
I think he was just asking, are they going to sign a contract?
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll have all that, okay.
Everybody signs a lease.
Yeah, okay.
Your 12-month max lease, is that 12-month out the park or 12-month move the site?
I didn't understand what you asked, I'm sorry.
If I'm going to stay more than 12 months?
You'd have to leave and come back. It's designed to...
That's what I'm saying, that'd just be pull into another, another site, go out the gate and come right back in?
Well, I mean, it's, we don't have that, like, I mean, this is not the first one that we've done and we, we cater to professionals, lots of nurses, but it's designed for people to come in and stay for a couple of months and leave. And the reason that we have that...
But you can't stop, like the meta building that's going in up there, if them guys want to come stay and they're going to be here more than 12 months. If he wants more than 12 months, he's just got to re-sign, pull out and come back in?
They'd have to renew and we'd have to approve it for them to come back, yeah. It's, it's designed because nothing's allowed to be built, no permanent structures, it's kept very nice, very clean, like a park.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Okay, I do want to make sure, not a storage or something of that sort, you know?
No storage is allowed. No, sir.
Y'all plan on putting like a clubhouse or anything out there, it's just straight sites?
It's just straight sites. And actually, the county ordinance is...
Yeah, there's no bath, a lot of children are not allowed, you know?
Like, there's no, uh...
Bathhouses?
Bathhouses and, you know, laundry mats.
Talk about like an office or something, though.
It's all on our ordinance.
Okay.
Can you tell us a little bit about your buffers and how, what you're going to do in that regard?
I mean, we're planning on leaving the natural buffers that are there and then amending what we need to, especially on the Brim Oak side, because of the grading plan shows that we're not going to touch anything on 25 and we're not touching anything on the further end of Brim Oak where we have to grade for the entrance way of Brim Oak, it's going to be landscaped very nicely, but I mean, we're going to go off of the ordinances and then we go beyond that.
You mentioned you had others. Where are they located?
We, we had one that we sold that was located at the, well, it's at the entrance of SRS in New Ellington.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of the name of that, that entrance, but it's on the New Ellington side.
New Ellington side. How long has that one been there?
It's been there for probably 20 years. We bought it about four years ago and we transformed it into what it is. It was mixed use and it was a lot of what probably people are scared of. There was tent campers, there was some very rundown housing that was there and we knew what we wanted to do and envisioned and transformed it into that. We cleaned up everything and we grassed the entire site and we created the concrete pads for people to be able to park next to or own and, and got rid of a lot of bad personality that was there.
Is there a minimum requirement for the type RV or camp?
We require, the typical person that we're dealing with is a $75,000 RV and a $100,000 truck and, I mean, we, we make them send us a picture of what they're bringing.
Um, now, I was looking at the larger aerial, there's three ponds behind that property and I'm, I'm just going to express my concern about the, the septic system and drain field and making sure that those, those ponds aren't contaminated. I don't know what DEHEC requires or what their distances are to make sure that we're not contaminating natural ponds and springs and creeks that are in that area.
That DEHEC is very stringent on their requirements, on what would be engineered and it's at the far end of the property, but it's a DEHEC septic system just like everybody else.
So, DEHEC will regulate you on that then?
It's an annual permit, you know, for...
Okay.
And they have to submit that permit to construct to us before they can continue.
That's all, that's all my concern, I have at the moment. We'll discuss it further in the... Thank you. Okay, back up. April, we're back up to you now.
I guess we're going back to...
Our old business.
Old business. Okay, y'all in your packet, I think you have it, had it to review the sample ordinance, just ideas of what it could look like if we did write a tree preservation ordinance. Do y'all have any questions? Do y'all want to? Does this look like what y'all envisioned this ordinance to look like?
Um, yeah, I read through it, to me for the most part it does. I just, there were just some details that I took some notes on. I noticed the developments that it would be affect, but planned developments aren't included in there and I don't know why we wouldn't require planned developments... And I don't know why we wouldn't require planned developments to have the same tree preservation ordinance as major subdivisions.
We can put that in there.
Okay, so I'd like to see planned developments and add it on. And I like that it addressed our, our timberland, that they're exempt from the tree preservation because duh, right? They're harvesting the trees for purpose.
It states in there that...
Yeah.
Tree farms, timber companies, they're exempt.
They're exempt, yes. Yeah, that makes sense because that's, that's a crop. And I like that it says that if they do harvest that timber, that it can't be developed for a certain period of time.
And that's what y'all can, y'all can recommend? Yes, you like that, no, it needs to be more or less?
So, yeah, I, I thought, I mean, 36 months sounds like a long time, but it takes that long just to acquire land? The engineer, I mean, it, it takes that long before you even start construction on something. So, I didn't feel like 36 months was a long enough time to prevent what we're wanting to prevent. I, I wanted to propose a 60-month.
Is that 60 months?
60 months on that. And the paragraphs about, you know, if a, under tree preservation, if, if a significant tree or a grand tree, a historical tree, needs to be removed because of disease or damage or whatever. It says that's decided by the planning department director?
They'll turn in a request and then we would go out and say yes. Or they would have an arborist come in and verify something from an arborist saying that it is diseased and it needs to come down.
That's, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking it might be best to have an arborist make that decision. Let them look at that tree and see if that, it needs to be taken down. And I read through that tree ordinance on my phone. Okay, here it is, sorry. I found, I found it in my packet. April, under, on page two, under historic grand and significant trees, see? There's a blank there? Was there something else that needed to be filled in there?
Species, if we wanted to specify a certain species of trees that we would dictate as being historical.
So, that's what that's left blank for? If we wanted to list specific species? Okay.
Is there a reason we're doing unzoned areas?
Doing what now?
Unzoned.
Yeah.
But there's a reason we, we voted keeping it unzoned. You're zoning it unzoned now.
Well, most of the...
Tree preservation.
Most of the county's unzoned. So, this is a countywide ordinance, so it would cover unzoned land.
It would just cover if we had a developer that come in and they wanted to do two and a half acre lots, we would still have the tree preservation, you know, if they hadn't, they were in a place and they wanted to develop, but there's no water, no sewer. And it would still have this tree preservation implemented.
So, by this packet, there's no bit of them acreage? It's going for all acreage?
Is there a...
As far as it, on the zone, on the trees, if I'm doing the two and a half acres, I can't take every single tree?
The, this ordinance will apply regardless. And then you have a chart in here that says if your lot size is this, you'll, you'll need this many subdivision trees. The requirement for that goes up. It's still the 30%. And that, that is a typo. It should be a 30% canopy requirement. I mean, you can change it if y'all feel like that is too much, but it would still require, regardless of where it is, regardless of the lot size, it would still require that 30% canopy for the entire neighborhood as well as the buffering.
You're saying neighborhood, but if I'm just, if I bought two and a half acres?
Oh, no, it's only major subdivisions.
Okay, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, only major subdivisions, yeah.
I, I've got a question. It's still on page two, under historic grand trees. That paragraph two?
Paragraph two, okay.
I'm not sure I really understand that. Could you give me like an example of how that would apply?
If you have a tree that has been in a subdivision, that has, you're required to save. It's grand tree, it is a specimen tree, and you, and you take it down and it don't have the paperwork to say, hey, we have approval from, to remove it, then it's against the ordinance, is to remove that tree without approval.
So, that's if it's in a subdivision, a major subdivision or PD, okay.
Or in a commercial.
Or commercial.
This applies to commercial and major subdivisions.
Okay. So, it's not an individual on their property that decide they need to take a trip? Just wanted to...
By definition, our major subdivision, if it's more than 10, 10 lots, more than, less than five acres, it's considered a major subdivision.
And it's identified? Yeah, and it's identified as a subdivision, like?
Yes, it is a major.
Major subdivision, okay.
And if we need to play with the language to make it a little easier to read, we can.
I don't want to take up everybody's time, but I do have another question. If we go to page seven, under replacement or removed significant trees, E, I think, yeah, it's in the yellow.
It's in yellow to decide, for y'all to decide, do you want to implement that?
Okay.
The percentage, do you want to change that if you want to implement that?
I'm trying to understand my own notes. I have that marked. But I had a question in my notes that says, I think, I'm, I'm thinking major subdivisions or PDs and some of these percentages. Let's see. Okay. Tree save areas are encouraged will be given credit up to 50% individual lot requirements when the number of trees in the tree save areas is equal to or greater than the total number of trees required on the total number of lots within the subdivision. I wasn't sure, would there be a situation where you might have, you know, lots that end up with zero trees, but the developer can make up for that in the other tree areas?
If we need to reword that, but the way, if you go over to the subdivision requirements, the lot, subdivision trees are separate regardless. And you're, you have to have the buffer, you have to have the canopy, but this, each lot has to have a specified number of trees. That's determined by the size of the lot.
Okay.
So, one, for, what is it, 8,000 square feet, you have one tree and it just keeps going up as the lot gets bigger.
I saw that.
And that's totally separate.
Okay. Because that was, that paragraph was confusing me thinking about...
That is required. So, they would have to have those, the way this reads, they would have to have those individual lot trees.
I had a question about the, can't find it in my, the tree replacement fund. I saw that there was like, maybe I'm not interpreting it correctly, but I'm sorry, I can't find the exact section. Do you, what pages?
Page eight.
Page eight. Thank you, sorry. I'm finding in my notes.
It starts on seven, it's number F.
Thank you.
That's where it starts.
Okay, that's where it is. Okay, it was number one on the top of page eight. The county planning director must review and approve all requests for alternative compliance. In no instance may 100% of the required site density be met through alternative compliance. As many trees can be reasonably, be expected to survive, must be planted on the site in question. I guess my question was, should we, is there anywhere we have a minimum percent?
There are in our ordinances when it talks about buffers.
Mm-hmm.
We can actually, we could probably remove that.
Mm-hmm.
But there are in our buffer requirements, it says you can use berms or fencing instead.
Okay.
So, this is saying, no, you have to keep the trees. And we could go do away with the 50%, we could actually do away with that whole statement.
Well, I guess my, I understand they can't use an alternative compliance to get rid of 100% of the trees. That's basically what it's saying. So, elsewhere in the ordinance, we have, we've already stated what the minimum requirement of the tree preservation is. Okay, I guess I was looking for it to be reiterated there in that paragraph. All right, I'm done.
Okay, I think I'm good on that right now. Okay, that being the case, getting back to where I were. That being the case, we will adjourn, let's see. Discuss regarding mass grading and curbing.
My suggestion with the mass grading would be to, let's see what this tree preservation ordinance does for us, to see if we need to go forward with mass grading ordinances. I mean, we can, once we finalize it, then we can see what that looks like, see if we even, it would eliminate the, the need for it. And the curbing, that would be, y'all would make recommendations of what that looks like for you? Would you do it just for commercial projects? Would you require it on all major subdivisions? How does, what are you thinking when you bring up curb and gutter?
Okay, I, I think the citizen question that was given to me was regarding commercial property.
Okay.
That was the question I got from the citizen on that, was can we not require that commercial properties put in curbing to keep it nice and clean and neat looking?
Okay, so we'll write it up just for commercial.
Yeah, no, so, if you got, beginning of something, depending on the locations, you got some location, you would need curb.
Right.
Curb and gutter, you know, depending on, now you did some part where all this sand and everything running, you would need the curb and gutter. But you get the other side of the county where you got clay and all, and you cut your ditch and everything, like, and that make good landscape, that would not occur.
And we'll just, I got it to the ordinance where it will be required in instances that it would not be required, depending on what you got going on, where the commercial business is going, going.
Okay.
Okay, that being the case, at this time, we will adjourn for, for my wait session, we'll go back in, on at 6 o'clock, about 10 minutes. Motion, we got second?
Second.
Motion, second, we adjourn, we adjourn. You know. Good evening. At this time, we will call the Esri County Planning Commission meeting for June 12, 2025, to order. At this time, we call it order, we have our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for another beautiful day. And thank you for allowing us to come together as a community and discuss what's best for our county. Lord, I appreciate all the blessings that you have given us so abundantly. Lord, bring us some understanding, bring us some calm, and bring us some good ideas to bring forward. And Lord, I ask all this in your holy name, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone stand, we do our pledge allegiance to, flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me see that. I will need a motion for approval of the June 12 agenda for tonight, in addition to I need a, a motion for approval of our agenda for tonight.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, that we, our agenda for tonight be approved, all in favor, raise your right hand. Posers, eyes have it. Approval for minutes of May 8, 2025, wait session.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, we said motion, all in favor, right hand. Posers, eyes have it. Approval of May 8, regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion, second, I'm, said motion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Appreciate it. All right. At this time, staff, you give your sense of report and plat review.
If you'll turn all the way back to, it's the last page in your packet, the long one, this is your sense of support.
Okay.
It was requested that we provide this, so that way, it shows the growth, so you can keep up with the growth. This is year-to-date. It, it lists everything back from January to current. And your plat approvals, we had five exempt, four plat renewals, or reviews, excuse me, eight minor subdivisions, one preliminary plat land development, which was Windsor subdivision that's already been approved, it was just a final plat for townhomes. And one, the final plat was the Windsor one, and then one preliminary plat was the RV park.
Okay, yeah. Appreciate it. We'll set that for information. Let's see, yes, because we got...
It'll be, Tom, Mr. Dunaway and Lisa Smith. You'll come back in our regular.
Yep. You have any more? Any, anything else in the comments?
You may want to call everybody up for the public hearing, and then if they have any questions, then you can bring them back up and they can answer all the questions.
Okay.
That sounds good.
That sounds good.
Okay.
All right, yeah, appreciate it. We're gonna go to our meeting, probably here. The proportion of their probably here allow you to comment from the citizen. They got our public hearing item on their agenda during the regular meeting. Citizen may sign, if you sign up to speak, be mindful, citizen may sign up to speak on a list maintained by the county planner prior to the meeting. Everybody that come up here will be eligible to speak, five minutes, no more, five minutes. If you're not seeing that, we're gonna cut you off.
You'll get a warning at four minutes, four minutes.
You're gonna, you're gonna give the time for us, huh? Y'all got, y'all keep the time on that for us, okay. Uh, we would just be, and remain on the subject at hand. We don't wanna go New York if we're in Chicago. Sometime we do that, we, we know how to get to Chicago, so we won't have to, okay. Uh, speak on the subject, and please be, don't get upset, stay in order, don't get mad and all upset, this is a peaceful meeting. And we accept that this will comment for us to listen to. At this time, uh, when you call your name, you come up, state your name, and, five minutes. At this time, we're gonna do the used car dealership. Anyone here have that loose, used car dealership of a home pond?
Uh, we've only got Mr. Dublin. Yeah, Mr. Dublin.
You don't have any?
No, he's the only one.
So we're going into the RV park. Assume the rest of you have an RV park, they call it Edsley Road, Brim Oak Road. At this time, the open public hearing, call it.
Willie Branlon.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Councilman, I'm Willie Branton. I'm a veteran and a resident of Brim Oak since nineteen ninety nine. Um, I would like to point out some, some things I'm concerned about. Um, so it's my understanding that county ordinance, the intent is to restrict one septic system per one acre. Is that my understanding? They intend to have seventy lots, they did make a statement that RVs put out considerable less water than a normal home. But if you take seventy lots and divide that by three, which will be a third, you get the equivalent of twenty-three homes on seventeen acres. So that violates the intent, in my mind, of one septic system per acre, volume wise, okay? All right. Also, um, they say that they target professional people with expensive motorhomes and fancy trucks. Well, if I wanna come in there and rent, and I've got good credit, they cannot turn me down because they're discriminating. So they can't say, everybody in that park is gonna be clean, professional people, they behave themselves, okay? The only way I can see they could do that is if they contract with a business for the whole park, and it's just for their employees. That's the only way I can see around them not having to let anybody who qualifies to rent a lot in. All right. Work hours, they're targeting the employees of Meta, okay? So if they had a hundred percent employees from Meta in there, and they all start at the same time, you've got seventy large trucks capable to haul a camper, trying to get out of that one driveway onto a small two-lane paved road, Brim Oak, at the same time in the morning to get to work at the same time. And in the evening, that traffic is just gonna be as heavy getting back in. So people on Brim Oak are gonna have difficulty getting out of Brim Oak during those hours to go to where they need to go, all right? Let's see. Um, like I said, there're gonna be large, heavy trucks with tools, okay, it's gonna be rough on that small paved road. The septic system, the drain field, no matter where they put it on that seventeen acres, the elevation of that seventeen acres is above everything else in Brim Oak. And water flows downhill, even underground, all right? I'm a professional, I travel River Road in Waynesboro, Georgia every day, two times. And I pass RV parks that rent to professional construction people, and they don't look good. I regularly hear of crime on River Road, regular drug busts, assaults, okay? Just because somebody's professional doesn't mean they're not a criminal. Also, the overruns for the power plants that were built in Waynesboro, the timeline overruns, the cost overruns, a lot of those overruns were due to the inability to keep a professional workforce due to the high turnover because of drug use and crime. So just because they're a professional construction worker and they make a lot of money, that don't mean they're nice people and they don't do drugs and they don't do violent things. Brim Oak Road, and the Brim Oak community has been almost no crime since I've been there in nineteen ninety nine. I can't really think of any crime. That is peaceful, quiet neighborhood, okay? The neighbors are all friendly, don't have any problem with any of the neighbors, okay? Um, and I just fear that we're all gonna have to put up gates and lock everything down with chains to keep it from walking off. Also, it's been my understanding since I've been there that the restriction for that neighborhood was one domicile or house per six acres. If they're gonna put a driveway on Brim Oak, that makes them a part of Brim Oak. And I don't see how they're gonna put seventy domiciles on seventeen acres, because that flies in the face of what I've always known about Brim Oak is the six acre limit per house. You already asked some questions about the max stay of twelve months, being able to pull out, pull back in. I don't really see how they can restrict that, as long as people qualify and meet the requirements to be able to pay their rent and don't have criminal histories and have good credit, credit rating. If they go month to month, that's, that's just more in and out and changeover of people, so. Like I said, that, that small two-lane road is gonna catch hell. Also, if you think about it, if they're coming home from Meta, working at the same time, coming down Highway twenty-five with no turn lane, people are gonna be lined up, backed up, trying to turn into Brim Oak Road. We've already had several accidents there at Brim Oak Road since they forelanded it because of tractor trailers coming down that hill, have a hard time stopping for people need to turn in Brim Oak. So it's gonna be a safety hazard on top of everything else, so. Any questions for me?
This is your time to give your complaint, your.
I know.
You know, so.
Well, if you can prompt me to give you some more information, I will.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Number three is Kimberly Owings. Two, sorry, I can't count. Kimberly Owings?
I wrote by paper.
Okay, Abigail Owings?
So that's hard to say. I didn't know if my parents or my daughter been wanna say something, so I wrote their names on that paper, but if they don't have anything to say, but my parents and I both wrote statements.
Okay. George Whittle. Okay. Bessie Whittle, did you wanna speak?
Will they read our letters that we wrote?
Yes, most definitely.
Out loud?
Yes, ma'am. As soon as everybody that wants to come up, it's speak first. As soon as they, they finish calling everybody that has signed up to speak, we'll read up everything that was given to us.
Okay.
Out loud, yes, ma'am.
S. Bellam, no, S. B. Hellenberg.
Good evening, thank you, sir. After a long search, in twenty fifteen, we bought our dream home, our retirement and our final home. What made it our dream home wasn't the house, it was the beautiful, vibrant nature surrounding it, the quiet, safe neighborhood, and the kind neighbors, most of whom have lived there for decades. Our little share of the forest includes a seven acre pound, pond, abounding with fish, turtles, frogs, salamanders, herons, and kingfishers. We also have hummingbirds, gulfinchas, cardinals, hawks, owls, and other glorious birds. We've sighted bears, bobcats, fox, deer, and other fascinating critters. It is our dream come true, but it may soon become a nightmare. The proposed RV site with seventy RV blackwater tanks, seventy graywater tanks, and a giant septic system is directly uphill from us, we're across the street, and the rest of Brim Oak and Windy Ridge. Anyone familiar with RVs know that managing wastewater is not a job for the untrained. It is difficult, dirty, and dangerous. We're told that the targeted RV occupants are metadata center construction workers and migrant farm workers, people who mostly will be ignorant of the knowledge, tools, equipment, skills, and dangers regarding blackwater management. Anyone who has had a septic tank knows that characteristically, they are problematic. Their one absolute dependable component is gravity, which works all day, every day, which means their waste will end up in my pond, stream, and groundwater. And our plants, trees, fish, and animals will be poisoned sooner or later, all gadgets fail. And when you have seventy gadgets being used by unskilled operators, sooner is more likely than later, and eventually is certain. Another concern is stormwater runoff. One of the RV park streams goes under Brim Oak Road and flows directly into our pond. Our dam is in good shape and handles the flow during heavy rains. But if they cut down the forest and pave the ground with RV pads and buildings, where is all that water going to go? I'll tell you, it'll go under Brim Oak, through the stream, and into our pond. That can't be good for either the road, our pond, or our dam. I understand that SCDES, which used to be DHEC, will do a stormwater erosion prevention study, but I was told that they will only be actually studying the RV park property itself, not those of us downhill where the subsequent stormwater erosion will easily breach and destroy our dam, thus wreaking havoc on the properties downhill from us. You cannot do what they plan to do on the highest elevation for miles around and expect anything but disaster. The Edgefield Assessor's Office classifies us as an agricultural property. We are an official habitat site certified by the National and the South Carolina Wildlife Federation. And we are in negotiations with the South Carolina Land Trust for our property to be certified as a conservation easement with the Upper Savannah Land Trust. We are being advised by SCDES and EPA regarding RV-related chemical and biological contaminants to test for, and it is a nasty list. We are currently awaiting already scheduled water and soil tests by Clemson Extension Service and by commercial testers to obtain today's baseline readings in the event that we must take legal action after contamination or water damage from the RV park. Does the Blackstone family really think this is a good idea? Because we do not. The unvetted transient population of seventy-plus occupants will greatly outnumber the entire population of Brim Oak Road. The SC Department of Transportation access and roadside management standards dictates exits line of sight distant regulations based on expected speed of exiting traffic, oncoming traffic speed, and type of traffic, like semi-trucks, and nearby intersections and/or the crests of hills, which makes putting that park exit on I-25 quite problematic. Therefore, the proposed exit from the park is between the corner of I-25 and the first curve of Brim Oak Road, which is up against my fence. That is a hundred-degree blind curve. The morning going-to-work traffic exiting the park will cause year-round daily traffic jams on Brim Oak. And furthermore, cars coming around the blind curve and cars coming off of I-25 at highway speeds will come head-on into that morning traffic jam. And Brim Oak is just barely wide enough for two vehicles to pass each other. What happens when a pickup truck towing a twenty-five-foot RV tries to make that ninety-degree turn? I've got like three sentences left.
We've let you go over a minute, so. I'm sorry.
There's no way for them to get out without getting hit from both directions.
Next is Randy Davidson.
Good evening, Mr. Burke. Um, Commissioners. My name is Randy Davidson, I live on forty-five Brim Oak, that was my wife you just heard from. I am adamantly opposed to the Backstone RV project on Brim Oak. I come to you with a very heavy heart, and I plead with you and Blackstone to reconsider this project. There are disastrous environmental implications if this project contaminates our pond, which is interconnected with all the other ponds on Brim Oak and Windy Ridge, via Horse Creek and several other and above brown creeks, as well as the water table. All of these flow downhill into the Savannah River. We of Brim Oak know and understand our environment better than you. I understand the process that you follow. I was a DOD federal employee, process professional for forty-seven years. Your processes do not take into account the impact of an accidental spillage of an RV blackwater sewage or improper design or mismanagement of the RV park. Your process does take into account that if the design criteria stipulated by the government is adhered to, it will work. But it, but it does not take into account the likelihood, almost inevitable, potential events that happen in RV parks. I have an RV and I've been in many of them. This location will result in an environmental disaster. I have seen on risk management plan, I have not seen a risk management plan, nor if you can, nor if you had one, how is Blackstone going, we would always see that twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. One accidental spill could easily result in the release of RV blackwater toxic fluids containing disastrous, harmful waste, decomposition chemicals, and a deadly algae into the ecosystem. Blackwater is known to kill wildlife, vegetation, and even people. Hell, it is against the law to dump an RV blackwater tank on the ground. Edgefield Planning Commission also has not done due diligence with your process to determine what the environmental impact will be if an accident happens. That lack of environmental impact also includes no consideration for what the community of Brim Oak and Windy Ridge believe and deserve. Our lives will be seriously impacted. The stress alone has angered many of us, and you will hear that today with the rest of the people behind me who voted for you in office. How would you feel if this was happening in your neighborhood? We understand the importance of revenue for the county, but there is no consideration for the welfare of our neighborhood community. None. Reputation is hard to achieve, easy to lose, and one bad decision is hard to regain. And this is a bad decision for both Blackstone and Edgefield County Government. Blackstone appears to have good reputation. The website states building, building their great homes, this is off the website, building great homes starts with building great relationships. We serve clients the way we would want to be served and believe that this is the committee, the commitment that sets us apart. That does not happen in this case, red flag. In this situation, we are also the clients, but there is a couple other outliers that put their reputation into question. Why haven't they been accredited by, by the Better Business Bureau? Red flag number two. And when Blackstone bought the property, they went over to Bill and Beth Powell's home and promised that they would never place a trailer on that land, red three. And we still. And we still investigating a stream of information found on the internet regarding an event in March of 2021 between Edgefield Government and Blackstone when the public was ignored, pointing to unusual business practices similar to what is happening now. There was little to no transparency in this process. The citizens of Edgefield, not developer businesses like Blackstone, elected you to office and pay your salaries. Battle lines are being drawn. A petition has already been started. A prayer group has been started. A lawyer from the Environmental Law Group is on standby for us. Social media is a powerful tool and our GoFundMe experts are ready to push the button and our social media experts are ready to go. Public opinion is on our side and it will rapidly grow. The next step is yours and at the very least, this commission should table this decision and gather more information about the environmental impact and demand a risk mitigation plan to be approved before anything starts. Or Blackstone can become a hero today. Cancel their project, come and talk to the people on Brim Oak and Windy Ridge community and do the business the way you can claim on your website.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Rest my case, sir. And united we stand, divided we fall. And how many people in this room are against this? Raise your hands.
Deborah Dixon.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for having us tonight. So nobody here wants to be controversial, you know? We understand that people like to make money and you want to be successful. It's very understandable. We're all in the same boat. We're people and hopefully we're all striving for that same award and that's to get where we're all going. But with that being said, we also want to enjoy our life here. The residents of Edgefield, their prayer today is that Blackstone and you will understand that it's a whole lot more about money than money. It's more about a way of life that Edgefield has. It's constantly changing and we can't stop change. But my grandparents used to say, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I think that is, in this case, very true. I'm a B license wastewater treatment operator for South Carolina. I have been working for Kimberly Carr for twenty-nine years. I am their water treatment operator for the mill. Taking note that we do not have fecal matter that we water treat there, but I'm very familiar with areas that do and have done water treatment in other areas. So, RV wastewater can be a safety and environmental hazard and pose a threat to our waterways, aquatic life and our own human health. RV blackwater and graywater contain harmful pollutants such as bacteria, parasites, chemicals, detergents and excess nutrients which can cause toxic algae growth. If improperly dumped, contaminants can be carried into our storm drains and eventually reach our waterways and oceans without treatment. Even the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, is concerned about the RV sites, particularly regarding wastewater management and potential environmental contamination. The EPA concerns and regulations regarding RV sites focus on several key areas. Wastewater treatment. RV parks must adhere to local, state and federal wastewater treatment regulations, which include obtaining permits, meeting effluent standards and complying with monitoring and reporting requirements. As long as they can see what's going on, that can happen. A lot of things we know out of sight and out of mind happens. We know that there are spills that are illegal, like the gentleman, like they were playing earlier, you can't even dump stuff on the ground, it's illegal. So it's very important to remember that. You have the Clean Water Act that the EPA is dealing with, so the Clean Water Act mandates that the RV park sewage systems meet water quality standards to safeguard public health and environment. Park owners must comply with environmental laws concerning sewage treatment and soil containment. The whole acre thing, my understanding is exactly like the first gentleman, when you divide that out, and I had divided it out before he came up here, is exactly will be twenty-three in that different area from the way that I understand it. Large capacity septic systems, the EPA regulates large capacity septic systems, sometimes found in RV parks under the underground injection control program. Preventing contamination is a key concern for the EPA and preventing contamination of drinking water sources due to improper waste disposal and enforcement. There's much value of proactive strategies over reactive solutions. So like I said earlier, we pray that you take note, Blackstone, and you take note, cancel please, for the prayers of Edgefield County.
Billy Powell.
My name's Billy Powell. I live at Southern Brim Oak, which is on the corner of Brim Oak and Highway twenty-five. So this development is directly across from my front door. I will say I have very little knowledge of the process of land development in Edgefield County and April was kind enough to take the time to help me understand how it works. I submitted some written comments for the record and I won't repeat those comments now, but I hope they go on the record and I hope y'all, y'all hear them. However, that does not change my opposition and my objection to the development. I think that I saw in the information that I've got that the minimum size for RV parks, five acres or maximum fifteen acres. And I think possibly that piece of land may be seventeen acres or maybe sixteen. I don't know that for a fact, but that would be something that I think should be considered. My main concern is groundwater contamination from sewage and runoff. I happen to be directly across from the development, so it stands to affect me for sure, but it stands to affect an awful lot of other people. Those are my biggest concerns. I think I heard something about tying onto the sewer line, Edgefield County Water and Sewer. To my knowledge, I'm not able to do that. I may be wrong. They may be able to tie into it, I don't know, but I assume it will be septic tanks and that can create a problem. In my comments, I mentioned groundwater contamination sewer, which I've got a pond and it's filled by springs that run under that land. So again, I won't get into my comments there. I just hope that at some point, some consideration will be given to the people that this could possibly impact the very most from the groundwater contamination and runoff as well as other, other things. I know that it's a lot easier to stop a problem before it happens rather than take care of it after the fact. So I just hope that all things will be considered and there won't be any negative impact on the people surrounding. And I thank you for allowing me to give my two cents. I guess that, thank you.
Helms.
I reside at one oh eight Sable Lane. I'm gonna bring a different group into it because we're downhill also. And our well depths are anywhere from thirty-eight to one hundred and seventy. We got some thirty-eight-foot wells, shallow, which is gonna, that poor lady's gonna have to move if this continues. Her name's Rachel Tool. She's already sent in her comments and most of hers was outlining the septic water environmental impacts on the neighborhood and she requested it be put in the record. Edgefield County, her bottom line statement is the health of Edgefield County citizens should not be sacrificed for short-term development gains. Failure to act now will result in preventable harm to families and costly legal consequences for the county. Two counties up north, they took it. They got sued by us, people, and they lost a lot of money. It is in Ms. Tools that she sent to every one of y'all. Okay? I have some concerns on all of that, but I wanted to take a different turn is if you come down Sable Lane, it's dirt. If you can't get out twenty-five and Brim Oak, you go the other way, you're gonna come down to dirt road. We already got a seventy-plus hollow oak subdivision at the other intersection with four dirt roads at the southeast end of Sable and Sunnybrook and one paved portion. By the way, again, I've said a couple, to a couple people, we have zero stop signs at that intersection. There's four dirt roads and a paved road. Aiken County, that's like pulling teeth. Then you add to the DNR Nature Conservation Park being planned on Sable Lane. Now you're planning a seventy-spot RV park close to Northwest Corner in Sable Lane. So this will produce many negative impacts on our road, road design. Increased burden on inadequate structure, infrastructure, adding more traffic and residents to existing four dirt roads will significantly worsen their condition, leading to more potholes, dust and maintenance problems. This is not sustainable development. It sets up new and existing residents for frustration and potential property damage. Safety concerns. Bad roads are a safety hazard, especially when they're dirt. Especially and for the emergency vehicles, school buses, residents with mobility issues. Development will increase traffic on these dangerous routes, putting everyone at risk. Environmental impact. Both development and dirt roads can lead to increased erosion, sedimentation of nearby waterways and habitat disruption. Prioritizing the protection of the natural environment is essential.
Four minutes.
Cost efficiency. Adjusting infrastructure issues before development is more cost-effective than attempting costly repairs and upgrades afterwards. I think the gentleman over there said that. Investing in improving the roads first would be recommended. Deleting the planning for this would be better. Negative impact on quality of life. Poorly maintained dirt roads will negatively affect quality of life for all area residents due to constant dust, noise and difficulty riding. We already deal with that, but now we're gonna trouble it. A barrier to sustainable growth, allowing development on inadequate infrastructure hinders sustainable growth and responsible planning. The county should focus on building a stronger community with proper infrastructure, not neglecting existing problems that has already been created. If I can get through her into hers.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Okay. Turn an RV on a airplane, turn, see how long it takes.
Jen Moore.
She, it was written?
Okay. Do you have it? Ashley Williams.
Hello. Good. I'm gonna try to be brief with this. Okay, first, aside from the obvious noise and traffic, studies have shown that crime rates, like burglary, robberies, violent crimes are increased due to the lack of social ties as well as the lack of background screening processes and the lack of ability to hold the individuals accountable in general. The next issue is the high risk of contamination to the surrounding ponds and streams that contaminate everything from the soil. To use it as an example, Horry County, Beaufort County, Lexington County, where DHEC has had investigations, had to do testing, put so many violations, people got sick with the E. coli and things of that nature, so forth and so on. And all of this is because of the failed systems and the overflow. Third, I was under the impression Brim Oak had a covenant that dated back to nineteen seventy-six in which the property owners have upheld throughout, yet this would break almost every, every rule of it. I was also under the impression, could be wrong, I don't have access to this information necessarily at the moment, but that there was a Conservation Land Trust in place for this specific parcel of land back several years ago. I'm not exactly sure, but I'm also kind of curious as far as how this property is classified as agricultural, if they're gonna turn it into something such as for commercial use of this nature. Also, what I think you were referring to earlier was the section twenty-four through seventy-nine of the Edgefield County ordinances in regards to how the impervious surface ratio and things and how the acreage, but I don't really have time to hit on that. I also, I created a petition yesterday, only had one day to do it because I just found out, you know, what was going on. But between yesterday at eleven-thirty and today at twelve o'clock PM, there were eighty-three members of the community directly surrounding the proposed parcel that signed it to oppose this parcel. Lastly, I'm just gonna hit, for twenty-seven years of my thirty-eight years in Edgefield, I've spent in Edgefield, I have eight-year-old twins who have pretty much grown up and we enjoyed the quiet, safe neighborhood. Even the neighbors we don't really know all that well, look out for each other and things like Hurricane Helene situations, you know, we all come together, we help each other. The approval of a short-term RV park will change our entire way of living and sense of community, honestly. Instead of individuals that take pride in their homes and their social ties and the community as a whole, individuals will be here today and gone tomorrow. I understand that the Blackstone Company sees where they stand to benefit financially. We all understand that aspect. But for many of us, this is our home. This is where many people have been for decades, the place where they've watched their children grow up, their comfort zones, our comfort zones, our safety nets. And, you know, we built our life all the way around it, it's our way of life. And honestly, I would like to ask Blackstone, you know, how would they feel if this, if they were in the situation that we were in? How would they feel if, you know, their entire way of life was at risk right now, their children? And, you know, it's, I don't feel like it's right, but set aside from that, they violate almost every rule of every aspect here. And what upsets me even more is we just found out about this two days ago. It was not from them. They may have put it in the paper and that's fine, but on the poster it said, "Public Hearing." No one knew what it was about, no one knew how we were gonna be affected drastically. This is huge. This is gonna change everything we know. And I'm definitely opposed and I would like to know how they would feel in this situation. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Jason Cobb.
Hello. How you doing? I moved, me and my family, have three sons, wife for twenty-six years. We live right on the bottom right-hand corner of the Hairpin Curve, so this proposed entrance and exit would be right on my property, right, right in front of my house. Unlike most of the people here today, I don't have a pond. Hopefully one day I'll get a pond. But although the erosion and the runoff is important to me, the biggest issue that I have with this proposal is the traffic that's gonna be generated up and down Brim Oak. I don't have a dog in the fight for a pond, but in twenty-twenty, my kids were turning in off of twenty-five and because there's not a D-cell lane, they got in a wreck and totaled my truck and put them in the hospital. And so I am worried with all the extra traffic slowing down and turning in. For a visual, you have seventy sites, average size, twenty-four-foot camper with eighteen, twenty-foot truck. You wanna put that end to end, you're looking at a half-mile caravan being in and out of this development on a temporary, daily, weekly, monthly basis, but that's half a mile of campers and trucks that's gonna be turning out of there and going in front of my house up to twenty-five that we're gonna have to deal with. Everybody else is talking about the environmental, they're a lot smarter than me, so I'm gonna leave that portion of this alone. But for me personally, I just spent almost ninety thousand dollars to improve my house, added twelve hundred square feet. Thank you, Edgefield, for my tax increase. And if this brings my property value down after I spent two and a half years of busting my tail adding on to my house to make it better for my family, it's probably gonna bother me a lot more than, than now, just simply because I'm trying to do what's best for my family and to create wealth and be able to retire. Hopefully I'm fifty, I got fifteen more years of whatever I gotta do, I hope. But one day I would like to be able to have a development there at my house where I've built revenue and built, built equity in my house and I don't know what this is gonna do to the whole value of the neighborhood. So that's pretty much my sentiments, is that I'm worried about the traffic, I'm worried about the safety of the residents. I personally don't want to be blowing the horn at somebody every morning at that entrance right there, oh, I'm on my way into work. oh, I'm on my way into work. Um, other gentlemen that spoke about congestion of traffic coming in and out. There's also Generac up the road, there's also two Bridgestone plants, there's also other that are close to the Meta facility that we already deal with traffic. They've already added housing developments across the road on twenty-five, so it's already become congested. If you pull up GPS and you search for my address and you're in Augusta, Georgia, it's gonna bring you down Brim Oak Road. If you put my address in when you're in Aiken, South Carolina, it's gonna bring you up Windy Ridge and around the Hairpin Curve. I have cameras on my house on that curve simply because of the amount of accidents that have happened or near misses or people getting run off the road. I've had a twenty-five-foot camper and I've tried to come down that road and turn into my mailbox without knocking my mailbox off the post and it's a challenge. So I don't have a luxury truck and I don't have a luxury camper, but um, I wanna see how many people on camera I see drop that thing in the ditch or into Barry's fence trying to get around that curve, avoiding uh, traffic. So that's all I got. Hope brought a little bit of humor to the conversation. Like it said before, we know that, that people are in business to make money and we get it. But also, some of us have been working for a very long time to earn income to better our properties and better our living conditions. And the unknown of this project is the most unnerving, is that we don't know how this one project is gonna affect everybody in the neighborhood long-term financially due to environmental damages or traffic or, in my case, kids getting put in the hospital because of extra traffic. So that's all I got. Um, yeah, I think we did a topology map of the elevation.
Four minutes.
There's eighty feet, more than eighty feet drop from the top of twenty-five to the...
Where the septic tank though?
Yeah, where the, where the, the proposed leach, whatever, from there to the bottom of Brim Oak, um, where it would be dumping into the stormwater runoff into Barry's Pond is over eighty feet of elevation. So um, it might not be today or tomorrow, but I'd say gravity winds on an eighty-foot drop for, for septic or stormwater runoff. All that retention pond collecting all the water from the runoff from the concrete pads and whatever is great and fine and dandy, but eventually that thing's gonna get full and it's gotta go somewhere. So if it's going right across the road into the same pond that the, whatever is, unless it's being monitored and treated, I, I don't know how water runoff from that retention pond can't have something in it. Good?
Okay.
Thanks.
Steph Kay.
Hello, I just have some brief comments. Uh, just wanted to say that many of my concerns I've heard from others. Uh, one would be the septic density, just in the general area. And we're all on wells, uh, I think almost all of us are on wells and we just generally have concern about the amount of septic density in that neighborhood and the possible effect of, of, of all of the facts that we're all on wells and many of us, a lot myself, are on a lake. Uh, if I didn't mention it, I'm on Sable and Windy Ridge. Um, and the second thing I'd say is, I don't, I don't know how this factors into your decision-making, but it clearly doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. Uh, and I, I, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find anybody in the neighborhood that thinks that this fits the character of the neighborhood. Um, maybe that's not in your decision-making, but if it is, I would, I would consider that. And then the last point I'd like to make is obviously the entrance on Brim Oak. When I saw this, I just assumed, I was talking to my wife and I said, oh, I'll assume the entrance is gonna be on, on highway. I said, no, no, I think it's on Brim Oak. And that just doesn't make any sense to me, uh, in terms of trailers and so forth. Um, if you don't know the road, I recommend you go check it out and see it because I, I just don't think an entrance on that side makes any, any sense. And then just anecdotally, um, I'm on two Telegram and chat groups in our neighborhoods. One has forty people in it, another's about ten people in it and they've been lighting up all day. Um, and I'm, I've been here three years and I've never bothered coming to anything like this. So uh, it, it, that's just anecdotal representative of, of kind of the concern that I think is in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah Branton.
Hi, um, I didn't really plan on speaking today, um, but I, I've grown up here my entire life, basically. And to see something like this turn into what it possibly could be is really hard to see. Um, I know y'all have a lot of things to consider and people wanna make money, they have businesses, but for all of us, this is home and a way of life. I don't want to see it change. Um, it only takes one bad wreck, one break-in in a septic tank to contaminate a lot of lakes. We do have a pond, um, that is shared and it does flow down into ours. Um, we used to have animals, um, that could hurt that or crops or us. Um, and then, um, yeah, I'm, I'm sure I can't really say anything else that hasn't been brought up, but uh, I hope that you guys can think about our way of life and, and weigh the pros and cons of this type of thing. Um, so I appreciate your time today.
Kevin Hall.
Hey, uh, forgive me for not writing it down, I didn't know we could submit it by writing. I'm not a big speaker in front of people, but I do wanna ask you a question. Is that a retention pond or a pond that they're proposing? Yes.
It's retention.
They're gonna have to build it, it's not there now.
Okay, so that's where all the runoff's going out. The, the other question I had, does the ordinance not, not state that you have to move the camper every thirty days, not yearly? I thought I read that.
Our county, our county ordinance?
I think it says thirty days, so that's seventy campers moving around every thirty days.
Code enforcement.
Okay. So the biggest concerns I got is traffic with young kids right there across the street. Um, of course, all the same concerns that the neighbors have got, but, you know, I hope y'all do some consideration and get it all squared away for us, so.
Juan Jimenez.
I'm neighbors with just about everybody here, we all know each other. Uh, there's a lot of proposals, I guess. I guess they couldn't get people to buy the two lots to build two houses, so they've come up with this scheme to uh, put a trailer park or an RV park. Now, it doesn't thrill me. I'm half-mile back, half-mile over, a long way from it, but yeah, gravity still works. Uh, I guess from the county's perspective, if you folks could come up with enough money, maybe we could help, y'all can reimburse them for the two lots they bought. Put a park there, put something there that we can use too. Because this is about people, it's about our homes, it's about our neighbors. Uh, everybody's been real well-mannered, I hope it stays that way. Uh, we got a lot of faith in you guys, y'all do the right thing.
I think Richard Hollowfield.
Hey, my name's Richard Hollowfield. Uh, I do not live on Brim Oak. Feel for all these people who do, that's the reason I'm here today. I live on the left-hand side, the house is lower by a hundred years old and I'm gonna have a fifty-foot space between me and the campers, if I, if I heard everything right. Okay. Um, my wife worked me a bunch of things, uh, will there be a leach field? I told her I could ask that question, somebody referred to these folks back here in the back. Will there be a leach field? Well, that's going uphill, that's crossing my property and that would never happen. So I don't, I just wanna know, is there gonna be a leach field and if so, where at? Okay. Um, oh, I also have a question, the retention pond. Is it like what you see in these other subdivisions, just a big hole? And if, okay, that's another question.
The retention ponds, you know, catch the water.
It would retain, it's designed to retain and be recreation.
Retain it while they go.
Please let me finish, is this gonna be a big hole like all the subdivisions have? It's got a retention pond, nothing in there at all, just a big hole, right? Okay. Um, professional construction workers or tradesmen? Uh, I worked construction for thirteen years. You do have professionals and then you have some that come home and get totally wasted. I can speak from experience, I didn't get the waste part out, I just went home to my wife. Um, can someone point out on the map where the drain line's empty to the waste? I guess that goes to the other question. Where's the, where's the leach field gonna be, if there is one?
We really don't know.
Okay. Uh, now this is just from personal experience. Um, I know for a fact that over fifty years ago, the right-hand side of Brim Oak, where that green is, was the owner at that time was gonna put a pond in. The pond failed because it wouldn't hold water. Um, the retention pond, if it doesn't have a pool liner, basically a pool liner, it'll seep out through the water and these folks are right, it'll go into their ponds. Okay? Yeah, am I close to a minute? Okay, good. All right. Um, I know for a fact, when this property was bought, it was originally gonna be sold in five-acre lots, sixty thousand dollars an acre, I mean five, for five-acre lots. And nothing ever happened, so I'm kinda curious as to why, but these folks back here might be able to answer that question. Um, who's gonna be responsible for water to contam... That water, who's gonna be responsible for contaminated water? I don't know. Who? Who? Oh, I thought somebody said something, my bad. Uh, I guess I'm gonna finish up here.
Four minutes.
Thank you. Do you guys have the authority to stop this project? Once all the doc, once the Blackston group have gotten all the documentation they need and everything's approved, do you guys have the authority to stop it? That's the last question.
That's the question, yeah.
That's the question for you or whoever I'm supposed to talk to.
It, it, it depends.
Okay.
It depends, we got criterias that we have to go by and so forth and that and not based on personal opinions, because we use that, you know, a lot of, not that way, but we go by, we try to follow procedures, a lot of them we might not agree with, but the problem is that we're here to manage a commission and the commission has criterias that we have to meet. We got state got thing, and if, in any way possible, sometimes we have to delay one or whatever, a compromise or whatever, but just that stop, we just can't do that.
So if this group uh, gets all the documentation, gets approved for everything, that's pretty much it, right? Thank y'all.
Bob Petron. Okay. Pearlene Ridding, Robbins, I can't, Robbins. Okay. Eddie Criswell. Okay. And that's all.
You gotta read it.
Okay, the first reads, "No, the entrance to Brim Oak is no place for an RV park. Traffic, crime, and other, uh, and our property values will be affected. The contaminants from the RVs alone is in..."
Pull your mic down.
"The contaminants from the RV, the seventy RVs alone is enough reason to not allow this to happen. Has anyone taken to the fact that the long-term effects and condition the RV park will look like? There are other places they can go. Meta once built, I do, I do not see the demand for the park. Ms. Mary Lynn Stewart."
We have lived on Brim Oak Road about forty years. I have a large pond and a small koi fish pond just built. If water is contaminated in any way, it will kill my koi fish. We are really against this RV park, very dangerous entrance and exit on Brim Oak Road. Please do not let this happen. We did not move to this nice, quiet place for this, we vote no. Ms. Mary and Barry Tabor.
And Ms. Jane Moore. The, we live in a quiet neighborhood, Brim Oak folks, look out for each other. We love our neighborhood. You are killing our dreams, our peace, and our serenity. For many of us on Brim Oak and Windy Ridge, these are our retirement homes that you are putting in great danger. You are all voting in to represent the citizens of Edgefield County. But it appears that you are acting on behalf of industry and contractors at the expense and risk of, and finance, financial loss of your citizen voters. This project will have a significant negative impact upon Brim Oak and Windy Ridge wildlife on multiple levels. You are exposing our neighborhood to unknown, unvetted transient and could, uh, can, conduct criminal activity against us. Would you want this RV park in your neighborhood? No one in our neighborhood does. The people we, who want it are the deep-pocket folks who have no concern about us, our homes and investments, our peace and our tranquility. Please be a Christian and think of us with your hearts tonight. We are asking you to please consider what this will do to our wonderful neighborhood. You are elected officials who should be for the people who are you pledging, pledging your service to.
To whom it may concern, my family and I have lived on Brim Oak Road for fifteen years. It has always been filled with hard-working people who care about their neighbors. Due to recent events, it is hard not to feel like the community we have built is being disregarded because of the agenda that doesn't have our best interest in mind. The campsites leave residents vulnerable for a plethora of issues we have never had to face before. My top concern is the resident's safety. Allows, allow a transient people permeate access to our neighborhood, puts us at risk for vandalism, trespassing, and other crimes. Traffic is going to be increased at the interest of our road. This makes it difficult for permanent residents to enter and exit where they have always been able to. I would also like to draw attention to the big laws, to the bylaws, that state residents of Brim Oak have to own at least six acres of land to be able to place a residence. With two sides of your land being on Brim Oak, I'm confused how this even being considered. Allowing the campsite would not only, would not only be aesthetically pleasing, but will depreciate the property value of longtime residents, some of which who have been here for many decades. Because of the construction and the amount of wells being added, our waterways and wells are going to become polluted. Is the organization going to value responsibility if this happens? Are we going to be monetarily compensated? Who is gonna take responsibility for the type of people being allowed in the campground? I ask you not to make decisions for people who will come and go, but to focus on the residents who have been, been here nurturing and building a community. We vote no for a campsite to be placed at the interest of Brim Oak Road. Kimberly Owings and family.
Steve Moore, forty-two Brim Oak Road. No to Brim Oak Road RV park development. In reviewing the planning and talking with my neighbors, we believe the Blackston Custom Home LLC RV project is troubled with high risk on multiple levels. How can a plan be voted on with so many significant regulatory entities? DEHEC, ECWSA, Electric Utility, SCDOT encroachment, an pending status. We have a right to see the results of all of these before final approval. Why isn't the EPA included as the other regulatory entities? To ensure the environmental impact has been assessed in ca...
To ensure the environmental impact has been assessed in case the design fails. What is the Blackstone risk mitigation strategy if what they build fails and damages our neighborhoods? Your approval checklist must have a step that holds them accountable for a strong and thorough risk mitigation plan. After talking with the neighbors and thinking this over, it sounds like the Edgefield Planning Commission washes their hands after your checklist is complete. Your current checklist is not satisfactory to ensure your fellow, fellow citizens are protected. The current way is, the correct way is, there are any dangers to our property and is, and on us to spend the money to hire lawyers to fight for our rights, damages, and loss. This is backwards. You are approving projects without knowing all the aspects of their plans. As our representatives, this should be done at your level so we don't have the financial and stressful burden when bad things happen. At the very least, this project should be taken back to the table for another look to ensure you are holding them accountable with the document, documented risk management strategy that we can review and approve on or make recommendations to. We, the permanent residents, know our neighborhood better than anyone else. Think about what you would want if this was being built in your neighborhood. Please vote today like you would be voting if this was your neighborhood."
"We have lived in Brim Oak subdivision for forty-four years. It has always been a peaceful, quiet neighborhood. The families have always gotten along. This park is not good for us because of the pollution it's going to cause. We will have all kinds of people in and out causing damage to our small road. We could have sex offenders, drug dealers, and thieves walking on or riding RVs or golf carts through our neighborhood. We do have children in our neighborhood, and their safety is a serious concern. We would not feel safe in our homes like we have for forty-four years. Thank you, Mr. and Ms. George Whittle. We vote no."
"Mr. Billy Powell, seven Brim Oak Road. I am submitting my written opposition for the record to the proposed land development at the corner of Highway twenty-five and Brim Oak Road in the residential street with large lots of approximately six acres. It is a peaceful, quiet, and safe neighborhood. The density of the proposed development, as well as the transient nature, will significantly increase the traffic on Brim Oak, particularly if the ingress egress is on Brim Oak. This will not only be a nuisance, but also a threat to safety on Brim Oak. Again, the density, as well as the transient nature of the development, has the potential for a sign, uh, have a significant increase in noise, as well as safety for the surrounding area. However, the most concerning thing to me is the possibility of groundwater contamination with sewage and/or toxic chemicals from RV block, blackwater holding tanks. I have a pond, which is fed by springs that run under the proposed development, which could be severely impacted and polluted by the groundwater contamination. I also have a creek at the rear of the property, which could also be impacted. Almost all of the property from these ponds will be polluted, with polluted water. Could possibly impact property and groundwater for miles. According to the layout of the land, the impact from storm water runoff, as well as sediment, silt, et cetera, could also affect not only adjacent land, but also land downstream. It seems to me that the recommendation for approval of this development without the proper and necessary studies and assurance from the various controlling agency would be far outweighed by the desire of adjoining landowners, as well as the potential environmental impact to the adjoining landowners and the landowners downstream. I would think that the, in the event that the environmental impact and/or damage, the landowners would be held liable, and possibly Edgefield County also, for approving a development that had not been properly studied and assessed, as well as meeting all of the necessary regulations and requirements. Again, I am stating my strong opposition to the land development proposed."
Scott Lang, two forty, Wendy Ridge, Trenton, South Carolina. I do not support Brim Oak RV park development. I have looked over the building plans for the Brim Oak RD RV project. In my opinion, this will have a serious negative financial real estate impact and potentially grave environmental consequences to our area if there is a failure of any aspect of the, the design. The drop in real estate value is obvious. Who wants to live next to a trailer park? Secondly, the lack of a redundancy to failed design or operation, also known as a risk management plan, is completely lacking. A catastrophe failure of the RV park to control runoff and spillage will have a detrimental effect to the downhill ponds, creeks, and water tables. All the ponds and creeks on Brim Oak and nearly all on Wendy Ridge are interconnected via above and below ground creeks. Horse Creek is the main connection to all except for the one at forty-five Brim Oak, which receives all the current water runoff from the RV project site. Any septic tank failure, RV connections, or accidental spillage will cause immediate significant harm to that pond. The algae in a blackwater tank is very toxic and is known to kill water life, vegetation, and land animals. The forty-five Brim Oak pond spill feeds a creek which would contaminate the rest of the creeks and ponds all the way to the Savannah River along the Horse Creek path. This would be a huge disaster to our neighborhood and the ecosystem. So what is the risk mitigation strategy and management plan with redundancy backup for the following? What is the plan to handle a loss of power to the RV pumps and the in-ground septic system pump at the top of the hill? Remember, water flows downhill, not up. And we, in capital letters, are all downhill. Second, what is the plan to monitor and care for the septic tank? Third, what, who will oversee RV owners regarding blackwater tank dumping? What, who will oversee gray tank water dumping? What, who will oversee the vetting of potential RV occupants with local law enforcement to prevent criminals from occupying it? What and who will ensure RV owners are properly connecting, disconnecting black and gray water hoses? What and who will oversee cleaning RV sewage hoses after disconnection? It's against the law to spill black water on the ground. What and who will oversee changing of engine oil for onboard RV generators or vehicles? What, who will oversee and clean up spillage from RVs? Will there be a qualified, full-time manager at the RV park? What is the oversight management plan for the retention pond? All the above absolutely must be shared with both Brim Oak and Wendy Ridge residents, who all must have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments to the responsible parties. Until this is resolved, approval for the building permit should be put on hold."
Well, thanks, uh, to the staff for reading the letters and we heard comments from all the public and so forth. This time, if we close the public hearing. You wanna make some comment for what? Any more?
Yeah.
Yeah, I forgot to come up.
To answer a few of the questions that were asked, the, the leach field is at the far left of that stream.
Next to my property.
That's pretty much right. Any foot above, the conduit goes into our pond, any foot.
And, uh, the other question about the pond is gonna be a pond that also controls the release of the water. So the, the water's speed is not gonna change from where it is right now, what leaves the site. That's why the pond is designed as a, uh, detention pond. Slows it down and lets it release.
So, I mean, there, there are a-
I won't talk in time, please.
I mean, just most simply put, there are criteria and regulatory processes that, that govern both the septic system and the design, operation, and maintenance of the detention pond. And so we, you know, recommend that those processes be allowed to follow and, uh, through the permitting and regulatory process.
Did you all consider to put a entrance off of twenty-five?
Everything is considered, but the, from the end of Brim Oak to where that driveway is, uh, proposed is around six hundred feet, which is ample room for a vehicle to slow down and exit Highway twenty-five and then slowly enter Brim Oak. And then another concern that seemed to be echoed a lot was traffic in and out of there. They're not pulling their campers in and out of there every day. It would be a site with a camper and a single vehicle that would be leaving just like everybody else's.
If you come off of that highway at highway speed, there's no slowdown lane, there's no exit lane. We live right at that pier pin turn. People, I don't care what the law is, they come around the corner at fifty-five. When my mother was still alive, we had to bail off into the ditch three times to keep from having a head-on collision. They come around the corner really fast. It happens many times every day. Our ditch is ten feet deep. I could've killed her just trying to get off of our street. And they're gonna add all this to it? Crazy.
We, we beg the county and the state.
Okay.
Hold it. Order, order. Hold it. One time.
Did we get all the questions answered?
And I'll quit and ask for the commission up here, or the question answered there.
And just to answer, uh, the question of the regulatory authorities having jurisdiction over, like, DHEC and DOT. We, they are required to have those studies done, whatever they require of them. If there's EPA studies that need to be done, that, you know, they will have to give those to us. They will be reviewed, and if they cannot provide those, it will not go forward. That's part of the county's due diligence, making sure that those studies are done.
You told my wife last week that they have, as the owner of the property, they have right to use.
It's right by use, according to the zoning.
They have the right to protect. We're gonna fight this to the end.
And as far as the covenants, those can be retrieved through the corporate court's office, and if it does go against covenants, it does turn into a civil matter that you pursue. Uh, but as far as we, we do, they won't go forward. They will provide us all of those studies, and we can provide that documentation since they're such-
Are they responsible for lighting the road and to pay for the twenty-five?
That would be-
Slowdown lane?
That would be DOT. DOT, if they seen the need, they did a study, and they came out and looked at it. If they seen the need, then they would require them that. If they do not get DOT- It's would be them. If they made them put in a turning lane or widen it, it would be on the developer. So they would, you know, but we will have to have DOT approval, encroachment approval from DOT.
That's another aspect here, a lot on the line in twenty-five. The median on twenty-five isn't wide enough. I've got an eighteen-foot hauler trailer, and I got a twenty-two-foot long truck, and I got a ticket for not stopping at the stop sign in the median. So in order for me to stop at that, I have to go down the hill, turn left, and go up the hill and park in the center median. So if they've got a thirty-foot camper and whatever, that center median's gonna have to have some work done to allow people to be able to turn left, go up the hill, and be able to fit that. See, be able to merge right into the, into the lane, so.
Yeah, they, I'm sure DOT, they will look at all of that.
We've been trying thirty-seven years to get a turn lane.
And after my son got in a wreck, or two sons, when they got totaled, turned into Brim Oak, we did the same thing, tried to get it done. To, uh, to get it done, but that was a twenty-thousand-dollar loss on a truck to get to the hospital, so. I would've made four myself if I had the option after that.
I understand that this is a bomb that's residential, like, heavy, awful, is that correct?
It's zoned, res- it's general commercial, GC. Yes, sir. Right behind it, it's residential. RR is the what is behind-
The zoning map, then, that we look at, Mr. Powell's the top corner, Kevin's the middle corner, and the property line between me and Kevin had transitioned from commercial to private. And all that new property is commercial, but all that changed in the recent renovation.
Yeah, along the corridors, it did. It's used to general commercial.
May I make two points?
That's a-
Can I make two points?
Breathe.
Okay. Number one, today, now there's all tree and vegetation. When it rains, we get an enormous amount of water throughout that whole site into our pond. When you cut that, all those trees down, all that vegetation, put those concrete pads in for seventy water bees, it's going to increase. That detention pond will be overflowed. I guarantee it, like I said, we know our environment. We've lived in it for ten years.
We'll lose our dam. Our seven-acre pond will go downhill. Is it everybody else's?
And, and the other big issue is, why does Blackstone's experience managing an RV? They make great homes. Why the heck are they going down the path of an RV park? This doesn't make any sense. Because I live, I work at Fort Gordon, I flew up to Fort Lee back and forth. I live in my RV on a farming basis, and they were very strict on how everybody's RVs managed. If you didn't dump any black water on the ground. But it's not clear, it's not clear at all.
We are, okay, we don't wanna get a, hold it right there. What we got here, what we have here, you're there. We have rights. Everybody got rights. People got property and so forth. And, uh, we heard some, a lot, and, uh, after forty years of more of this planning commission, this is about the most sensible public hearing that, and, and more coming on, you know, but it was, you, you, you conduct yourself good, you had good points and so forth, and, uh, I don't get personally involved, but I, I, uh, listen to all of you. You got good points. But we got way we do things. What we have here is that I wish you could work it out. And so I know everybody wanna make money. It, it, but it should be more than just money, but it'd be shit, good neighbors too. So I wish it was some way that between the Blackstones and the community of Brim Oak could come together and compromise some way to work it out. And, and it probably won't happen. But this is, you know, so we got now the storm water and the sediment control, and the wave water control, it is an issue and it can be an issue. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a sixty-five-year plumber, sewer, building all that all my life. And I know what happens down the road, and we dealing with stuff now. So I think a lot of more study should be done into the project before it proceed. I know it caused to do that, but that's part of the give-all game. But, uh, all of this is pending, wave water pending, and, uh, as far as the electric, I'm not worried about that too, but SC, DOT and the encroachment, they've got committees. And I suggest, I, I know it could be a civil matter, what and so forth. But, uh, as far as, uh, I hope some way that you can talk about it, work it out to a compromise or something to be kinda meet each other halfway. And I don't know whether I have, I can't, I can't decide that or not, me. Now, that's what I would do. But have I got, uh, have we got any time for?
You can request a continuance.
That's what I like, that's what I like to contest. That's what I'd like, that's what I'd like to contest, a continuance. I mean, that we could have an attendant. And in the meantime, the Blackstone, the neighborhood and all, and then the, I'd like to see more engineering done on the stormwater and so forth, the pond, is it containment pond? Is it going to be a containment pond, or the old type sewer pond we had years ago that, you know, it held it, the settlement, held the settlement for years and so forth? So this is what I've got to say on the issue, and I would like to see it continued.
I have a question. I know someone had asked, is there supposed to be somebody on site to manage, to make sure, I mean, is this, is this, that does happen? You know, to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to do? How often are you going to come through the site to make sure that whatever rules or regulations that you set for people, that they're going to, that they're abide by it? And, you know, I'm curious if someone's going to be on site to watch that.
For those of you that don't know me, I've lived in this county, other than the four years I spent at Clemson, every day of my life. So I don't want y'all to think that I'm some outside entity coming to town to do this. I've built probably three hundred-plus homes in the county, and we were talking beforehand, and I've lived by my reputation. If you can ask anybody about me, I have a pretty solid reputation. The previous, the previous RV park that I recently sold, we have an on-site manager that lives right there next door, and she's going to be the same manager here, is our plan. All of this is still preliminary, and I don't have any of this ironed out because this is a planning meeting. We've got a lot of engineering still to do. But if you look at any development that I've been involved in or done, it is very tastefully done. And this is going to be a very beautiful piece of land that's grassed and has a pond that looks like everybody else's pond that's downstream. The septic-
You got the floor here, go ahead.
The septic field and the pond are not intertwined. None of that is related, just like everybody else that lives on septic tank in here, this would be the same way. DHEC governs how close you can have a leach field to a pond, and we would be way further than what they require. And yes, to answer your question, it's going to be very beautifully maintained, and we will be there very often.
If you build homes, then why are we not building homes?
We do a lot of stuff. We build homes and we do developments, and we do RV parks.
Just accurate, as far as if each individual makes it in short term, technically the people staying there wouldn't actually gain the resident, legal residency of that lot, right?
No.
Would each individual lot have a, an individual number or something like, let's say somebody would call nine one? Let's say somebody would call, you know, anyone.
They all have a septic cookup, they all have water, they all have power. They all have, they all have a number. It's all signed. It's all got signed.
This is a preliminary, so we can't, we can't require them to, you know, get the sweeps until they get that approval.
Right.
So we give preliminary approval based on the fact that the ordinances and the zoning say that they can do, again, a right by use. So if we say that, again, we come back to, you know, those regulatory entities are still going to have to give them, everything you're asking is still going to have to happen, even when, even though we give them preliminary plat approval, that we're just answering the question, can they or can they not do what they're wanting to do? Is by law, can they do it? So that's, that's what we need to answer here tonight.
We're going to do discussion?
You can, to see if there's, they, to allow time for them to talk back and forth if they're willing, but it's like I said, you know, they're not required to get any DOT or DHEC studies or anything, sweep done until they get approval from us, because, you know, it does cost money to have those studies done. So why would you do it until you know you can? So they will still have to have them if, you know, but what you're doing tonight is just determining whether or not they can do by the, what they want to do according to our law, our ordinances that are in place right now.
Okay. So we want to make a motion to table till next meeting? Okay? Second.
It's motion to second that we table until our next meeting. Did I get a second?
She did.
She did.
I did.
All in favor of saying motion to table until the next meeting, raise your right hand.
We have discussion after. We have a discussion before we finally vote?
Yeah. Right.
Okay. So that's all.
So can I make a point?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, so I do agree with tabling it, and I would like, like you mentioned, maybe get some ideas on the engineering, but I still have a question about our countywide ordinance, that there's one septic tank per acre. Like, we, we had Anniston Point compromise on their plan in order to reduce the number of septic tanks in that development because of the, I'm speaking, Lisa. We, we had them compromise on that because of the Sweetwater Creek that ran through there and the historic Magnolia Tree. So I would like, maybe we need to go to our county attorney for interpretation and clarification on that ordinance, because I still have a huge question in my mind about why-
Whether we regulate septic?
What, we do, because we have countywide ordinance.
It's either-or thing, the one acre rule. We are not a MS four. We don't, we don't have the, anyone qualified to regulate septic, whether they, they can or they can't, or whether it'll be a disaster or not. We just don't have the means to do-
That's not my question, April. That's not my question. My question is what it was earlier.
If we don't regulate, if we don't regulate septic, then the rule is just, it's a utility thing. Where you have utility, the more dense the, you can have things.
They don't have, they cannot access sewage, and we have a county ordinance that says if you cannot access the sewage system, then you can't have more than one septic tank on it per acre. That's my understanding of the ordinance. And I need, I need legal clarification, maybe from our county attorney on that, before I could feel comfortable voting for this.
We could have a statement from the-
Since we're doing the continuation, I'd like to have that answered next month.
On that issue, that position, issue there is that, I'm not on DHEC, but I know that they will figure out how many septic tanks they would need. It might not be, but, you know, calling what they, because they've got a new, you know, it's been split up now, but anyway, it might equal up to the acre, right? What you're talking about?
Well, and I don't know that yet.
I know it won't be, it won't be an individual septic tank for each RV, I know that much.
No, no, but-
But I'd like to see the plan or idea of what DX.
Well, the spirit of that ordinance was to make sure we wouldn't have a concentration of septic fluids in one area. That was the, that's the spirit of that ordinance. And so that's why I want clarification, is this going to meet that in the spirit of our ordinance, that we don't have too much contamination collected in a small area with multiple septic systems? I know this is one septic system, but it's multiple temporary housing. So I would, I would like a legal clarification from our county attorney on that.
Okay, we, we, we got the motion over, we passed the motion. All, we're going to vote on the motion to table. All in favor, say it, raise your right hand. Okay, so we table them, and we'll do some research. In fact, I'm going to DHEC myself and do some research on it. Okay. That's good. A month from today? Yes, sir.
It's a, it's a Thursday, it's always a Thursday evening.
Second Thursday afternoon.
All right, at this time, we have a final discussion regarding the proposed car dealership to be located off Home Pond Road in Johnson, ID one-eight-two-zero-zero-zero-five-three-zero-zero. Is Mr. Dubbin still here?
Yes, he's right back.
Okay. You have any more?
When we're adjourned, I'll talk to you.
Me still in order. Mr. Dubbin, would you come up for us, please?
Ma'am. And I'm eighty-eight years old, and I've lived in Brim Oak forty, almost forty years. I'm the seventh house on the left. I'm worried about the water, but my big, a big concern is the curve for the entrance and exit's going to be, you have to slow down and almost stop to get around that curve. There's been numerous, numerous accidents there. So if it's like that now-
Or other, or other systems provide-
Cars come out, can't, is there not any way they can have the entrance and exit on Highway twenty-five?
We're going, we're going, we're going to, we're going to look at that, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Mr. Dubbin, come up for us, sir. You have any more comments on your project? He's scared to. He's scared to. I don't, I think he meet all the criteria, and that's saying we located and so forth. And not any question about that, you know, he-
I don't have any questions.
In question. Someone give me a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In a motion to approve, that we approved, Mr. Dubbin requests for the, the location of your car dealership off Home Pond, any discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor of approval, right hand? Poses, I'd have it. Me, the John.